Call meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see, I'm aware of one change to our agenda, be the deletion of item 4C in the minutes from the October 9th meeting, any other changes or additions? Need a motion?
To approve as modified, second.
Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, special appearances, Employee of the Quarter, Mr. David.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm pleased to read about our Employee of the Quarter. The Employee of the Quarter for the fourth quarter of 2018, our Employee of the Quarter has provided Orange County with dedicated service since February 2016 was nominated by her supervisor. Since the beginning of her tenure, this employee has been an integral part of her department. She has an unvarying can-do positive attitude and demeanor and a never-ending determination to task. Always willing to lend a helping hand, she is the first to step up to the plate. She arrives early every morning, takes on additional tasks as needed, and volunteers her time to ensure office coverage. This employee continues to make a positive contribution to the county of Orange. Therefore, it is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to the board our Employee of the Quarter Kathy Weaver, Unit Support Staff with the Extension Office.
Oh, thank you so much.
And we have a resolution recognition that Mr. Frame is going to present.
Whereas Wally Rochheim has faithfully served the citizens of Orange County as a representative on the Orange County Library Board of Trustees for 13 years, beginning his service in 2005. And whereas the Library Board of Trustees was formed as a policymaking body responsible for all aspects of the governance of the Orange County Public Library System, including expenditures, budgeting, and operations. And whereas in keeping with the intended purposes, Wally Rochheim has made substantial contributions toward the library services throughout the county and to the continued success and operation of the Orange County Public Libraries, given selflessly of his time and talents. And whereas during his service, Wally Rochheim was instrumental in lobbying for funding through the Board of Supervisors, keeping the libraries refreshed and relevant, both in terms of appearance and materials, managing differing relationships on the Library Board, and being a driving force and a positive influence, and assisting in the development and implementation of long-range plans and various community meetings. And whereas whether it be attending a Library Board meeting, volunteering in the libraries himself, or visiting staff at the libraries, Wally Rochheim has at all times demonstrated a keen interest in the welfare of his community and its citizens, and has been known for his calming demeanor, emotional investment, and genuine interest, all of which has left a permanent mark on the county through his service, passion, and dedication. Now, therefore be it resolved on this 11th day of September 2018, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its admiration and appreciation to Wally Rochheim for his determination, commitment, and devoted service on the Orange County Library Board of Trustees, and to the longevity of the Orange County Public Library System. Signed, James K. White, Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisors.
Well, I want to just say this, and I have to say this to the board too. When I was serving a church in Silver Spring, Maryland, when we drove down here, the first place that I went to, even before I went to Lake of the Woods, was the Wilderness Library. I wanted to know what the library system would like now. It was card catalog at that time, but I've watched the improvements, and some of the key staff are here, and I want to thank them. But to thank you that you put the money where I think it should be, and that is with the public libraries, and you've got three great libraries as a part of the whole system. But thank you for it.
Sure.
Again, thank you.
Okay. Can send agenda?
So moved.
Motion is second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. New business, Town of Orange lease right-of-way use agreement. Mr. David, are you leading that conversation?
Yes, I'll get it started. I know the county attorney has some additions. Gentlemen, as you know, the private project has been underway now for some time. The Town of Orange has required the board and the school board to enter into agreement with town council, essentially allowing this project to go into the right-of-way within the town. I've got plan sheets here that represent where the locations are, but this agreement essentially is the result of work that Supervisors Goodwin and Johnson did with two of the towns' representatives. This document has been under quite a bit of review, revisions, even up until prior to today for the meeting. Let me just speak to the document in its totality is what the board has previously seen, certainly in communication from the county attorney as a returning client. But there is two sections of the agreement that I'd like to speak to that have been changed and okayed by the town, or one was okayed by the town and changed as a result of the town's direction. Let me speak first to the bonding requirement. There's a surety requirement in section, gosh, Tom, I forgot what that's.
Section 8.3.
8.3, that required the Board of Supervisors to post a performance surety along with the contractor. We went and tried to obtain a performance bond, just like any business would, from VACOR, that would be our go-to folks to do that. In that, and the county attorney can speak to this, there's a requirement for us to indemnify VACOR, the town council, and as the county attorney tells, the board cannot indemnify that, it's contrary to the case law and I think statutory law. And so I communicated that back to the town manager Friday, and said there's just, while there was a dis- willingness to fulfill the agreement, we couldn't get the performance bond required by the town. And I offered to post $100,000 cash, which would then be available to them to use. The town manager agreed that that was an acceptable approach, so there's an amendment revision to section 8.3 that goes through the process that they would go to call in some amount up to $100,000 for performance. And I'll let the county attorney go through that. Let me dispense with the second item that's been changed, that we verified, there was a requirement for us to have certain insurance coverage in naming the Town of Orange as an additional insurer. This was for the contractor and for the county. The town manager specified certain limits on primary and excess coverages. It turns out that our primary coverages weren't as high as what he expected, but our excess coverage when added to the primaries certainly exceeded the coverage that he had stipulated. We have sent those certificates of insurance, both the contractors and the counties from VACOR, to the town manager, and he's accepted those as to be sufficient to meet their insurance requirements. So we've dispensed with that issue, that issue's been resolved. The bonding issue, I think Tom had drafted some changes to this section.
Yeah, what I did is I actually took the towns' agreement, and I deleted out there 8.3 with bonding, because we can't, state losses, we cannot indemnify, and a bonding company won't issue us a bond without an indemnity agreement. And so I took out 8.3 and inserted a new 8.3 on the very back of your form, it may have been on the front of your form, is the redlined version of what I changed. We did not have time to run this by the town. I added the language at the end of that 8.3, if they want to call that $100,000 we're going to keep, that they need to follow state code, which is 15.21243, which is the procedure for making a claim against the county. And so I just inserted, what is the state law way to make a claim against the county and against that cash? But the town has not seen this and has not signed off on it.
And I'll just underscore, the town manager agreed in principle, he does, there's no need for us to deposit $100,000 to the town, as long as we had the $100,000 available, and I'll certainly represent to you all that we would have $100,000 available, that was satisfactory to him to satisfy the bonding requirement.
Question, I noticed that the school board chairman, it would be a signature to this, have they been, has she or the school board been involved in this at all, they understand and are?
They've gotten earlier versions. They haven't gotten this version, but since the dollars and the insurance were coming through the county, they deferred that. I've talked to Dr. Sneed, and they're going to take this up next Monday. I'm going to be out of town on Monday, but Mr. Goodwin is going to be there at the school board meeting.
All right, so they're aware that they're a party to this as well and are prepared to do it?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
The chairman, she was at the meeting on Monday night, last Monday, when they discussed this.
Okay, good, all right. Okay. So this is prepared for us to potentially take action?
All you would need is a motion authorizing your signature. So moved.
Second, in further discussion?
As revised.
As revised. Well, this, yeah, this version here.
Thank you.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. I certainly want to thank Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I thank you guys, you've put a lot of effort into getting us to this point. We got there.
It's almost like buying land.
What'd you say? Buying land.
For public safety.
That's an interesting comparison.
Very analogous.
Okay, a word of contract for veterinary services, Mr. Hildebrandt.
Oh.
Oh, so that button I have up here for your chair worked.
I see Stephanie taking care of that.
Well, it has your name, but.
I think it's my name because Stephanie couldn't be here, I believe I remember that.
That's a good reason.
So, or you?
That's why a bunch of them there with your name.
Yeah, you get comfortable.
Really? I need to wake up.
You cup coffee?
No, I'll drink coffee, thank you.
I was going to throw it at you.
He wasn't offering.
So I was involved in the procurement of the veterinary services, and we only had two offers, we vetted both of those, and would like to enter in contracts with those two firms. We reached out to all the vets in the community, well in advance, but most chose not to respond to the RFP.
How do we order services under that, under the contract? Do you, is this on a, is it on-call, or is it as needed, or what is?
It says needed, and in both cases, they provided their fees, so we have a schedule of their fees.
Okay. I asked the question because I noticed we were awarding to both, and I assumed there was some ordering procedure that we would go through.
So these, so we chose, there were two of them that applied, and we picked both of them.
Correct. And to be honest, we'd like to have more options than two, because there are times when things occur, especially with animal control, that it's the middle of the night or a Sunday afternoon, and it's always better to have more resources available, but we'll make this work.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
And that's unanimous, okay.
Thank you.
You want to do the next one?
Sure, what's the next one?
I thought we were doing both of them.
I'm sorry, I thought you put them together.
Got them separate.
Correct, because there were two RFPs. So the one that you just addressed was for veterinary services, and the other one was for facility supervising services, and we only had one responded to that. That's Dr. Jacobson, who's been performing that in the past, so we just want to continue with that.
So moved.
Okay. Second, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
You now. Okay. You may leave for a while, at least, yeah. All right, word of contract for retail visitor recruitment solutions, Mr. David.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we received a solicitation from a qualified offerer for this, I guess, project that's being undertaken by Economic Development and Tourism. And on September 11th, you saw a proposal by this firm to do these services. What happened was, when further review by Stephanie and the way that our procurement policy works, we felt it was, we were more comfortable, and certainly Stephanie guided us to that comfort level, that we would need to go through a procurement rather than awarding this as a sole source. So what we did was, we stepped back and went through a procurement, there was only one firm that submitted, it was Buxton, everything is in order, it's a one-year contract with other, four other optional years if we proceed to continue with it. So the funding's in place, I know everybody in Tourism, Economic Development is excited to get going on this, so recommend that you all accept this contract with one-year term and for additional one-year renewals.
And Brian, could you tell us, kind of refresh our memory in 90 seconds, what we're going to get for this?
Yes, sir, what they're going to do is data analytics on the Germana Wilderness area and the retail trade area, and what they're going to do is to get us the data needed to be able to develop a retail recruitment strategy that we would actually go and try to recruit, approach national food and hospitality retailers to look at locating in the Germana Wilderness area because of the market potential there, the number of people, the number of vehicles, the number of household income. The tourism piece this is being able to analyze where our tourists are coming from, by down to zip code, and then to our businesses, and then Lori and the tourism businesses will be able to target their marketing to specific geographic areas that are either coming here to visit, or geographic areas that resemble our tourists that are coming here now. It's a way of using analytics and data to help with our recruitment and for economic development and for tourism.
And how are we going to judge the success of this project?
The success will be our ability to move on a year-over-year basis for tourism, increasing the tourism accounts and where they're coming from, and then on the retail recruitment that we're able to land, just like industrial recruitment, actual businesses to open up in the Germana Wilderness area. There's also a component, I don't want to leave this out, there's also a component here for small business here in Orange and Gordonsville to use these data analytics to be able to know where their customers are coming from in the area, and we want to make that available to small businesses here, to be able to help with their marketing and trying to reach more customers.
Since their, the proposal here is that there's a one-year contract with options, are you saying we should be able to judge the performance, or the returns, if you will, on an annual basis?
Yes, sir.
As to whether or not to continue?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment that I've gotten a number of phone calls and conversations about. I realize it's probably the appropriate verbiage for what we've advertised for, but I've had numerous people say, oh, great, we're paying to have somebody else do economic development and tourism's jobs for them.
I just. Understood.
I've received numerous calls about that, and I've had to explain to people exactly what it was, so I don't know if there was better verbiage for it or not, but a lot of people had comments for it. And I would agree that that doesn't lend itself to what it really is.
Well, I'd be interested a year from now to see what we've gotten for our 65,000. I'm certainly not opposed to, you know, getting some ideas on the customer base that we have and the vehicle, getting all that down. I'm not sure how that costs 65,000. I'm a lot less enthusiastic about the idea that we're going to, we're going to see where our tourists are coming from. I mean, I'm not sure what we're supposed to do with that. Are we, I mean, if we're getting tourists from, if we're getting tourists from Missouri but not from Kansas, does that mean we're going to, we're going to start marketing to Kansas, or are we going to start marketing to Missouri? So where do, what do we really, what do we really get? I mean, I'm not sure where tourists are coming from, with that, why we even want to know that?
Because then we can do marketing to attract them and others from their area. It's about trying to get the inbound visitors here, rather than.
But don't we want to do marketing to the places we're not getting tourists from?
Well, this, this.
And so wouldn't that be like everywhere?
Well, nah.
I mean, I just, to me, it's, I think it's a waste of time. I think it's, not a waste, I think it's a waste of money, very frankly. I just, I think it's good to know, again, I think to know what we've got on the ground and to the extent we want to try to do retail marketing, which I think is a little bit of a dicey prospect in and of itself. But, and I think to the extent we can get information that local businesses who are already here can use, I think that's great, but.
We should be able to hear that from, back from the local businesses, what information they're getting and to what value it is.
Well, and we should be able to, I assume there'll be some kind of, it would be reducible down to a few sheets of paper in terms of what, you know, what information they have in that part.
Yeah.
But just knowing where our tourism is coming from, I, that, to me, there's almost zero value in that, because it's not, maybe if we knew who they are, are they young people? Are they old people? Are they wealthy people? Are they middle-income people? But knowing they're coming from Delaware instead of Maryland, I'm not sure that matters, because we've got.
Mr. Johnson, I didn't do it service, what you just, the profile that you just said, age, income, education level and all, that's what these analytics do, is not just where they're coming from. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't make that part of it clear.
But I think then how we use that, I mean, having the information is step one, using it is step two. And again, I don't know how you use it except for, to me, the smarter way of using it is to go to the places that you're sort of weak and.
Well, if you have the.
You're already doing well with Cohort A, then you probably need to work on Cohort B.
I see the economic development side of it much more than I do the tourism.
One of the things with the tourism is that they'll be able to do, you know, this market segmentation, here's the profile, age, income, geography, location, and then they'll be able to also analyze other potential markets where people, visitors could come from, that they're not coming from now necessarily, and allow us to also start targeting those markets as well.
Well, I'd be interested a year from now to be able to look at that and see what we learned and how we're using it.
As it will.
I think you, I think people have the same curiosity.
I'm not alone.
You're not alone. And frankly, when I saw that, I was aware that we were having discussions about doing this, but when I saw that we're going to do it five years in a row, that was, that made me question about, if you collect that data once, you know, I'm not sure that we're in a position to use a whole new round of data every year for the next five years. So the fact that it's set up as an option is a good thing.
The tourism data is just a one-year, after the retail recruitment is, it could be an ongoing thing, but we have to judge the success of it after.
It's only 15,000 for the tourists.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
I suppose.
Yeah, I heard, I heard a, I heard a response. I'll call it unanimous.
I heard somebody from Missouri say shiny, so.
All right, any old business, Department Director, Constitutional Officer reports.
I don't know if this would be old business or not, but I'm going to bring it up. As I brought up a number of years ago about reassessment, and us hiring our own in-house reassessment.
We're supposed to have a work session on that topic at some point.
Yes, and it was just reaffirmed to me today. I happened to be down in the Lake of the Woods and ran across one of our contractor's employees, less than stellar, less than stellar. I'll leave it there, so I just want to make sure that under the old business that we do have a work session and start moving forward with in-house.
Yeah, okay.
The people before that were even less than stellar, so.
You mean we saved programs?
Uh, okay.
Less than stellar, you said it was less than, less than stellar.
I was being very kind.
I could tell you were struggling to. Okay, county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, administrative's report, we have legislative priorities for 19, which we have in a package, and I guess we're going to talk about those a little bit in our meeting next month.
Right.
Anything you want to highlight today?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think I've just teed this up where, this is where you all are, if you want to add, subtract on it, you can today. My, I guess my recommendation would be just take it under advisement, and I'll have it on the November agenda, and then you could adopt it, and then we would distribute it to our Senator and delegate in Daco.
Okay, Madison Garden Subdivision, CDPG.
Yes, sir.
Planning grant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, back in May, you authorized us to submit a planning grant application to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm pleased to report that we were awarded the planning grant, and I included the letter from the Housing and Community Development contact for us. What we're going to do from here is, we've, are working with the Regional Commission, Patrick Monney and his staff, particularly Patrick, who's been certainly our technical advisor sort of and support person in this. We're going to be convening a meeting of the stakeholders, that would be Ms. Bell and I forget the other, her neighbor's name, but Ms. Bell, who's been instrumental in getting the, I guess, spark plug for this going, together along with engineers and things to kick this off with the state, where I think we're going to be doing that in the next week or two. Once that's started, then a preliminary engineering report will actually be produced, that's what this planning grant is being paid for, is paying for, and then that will assess the wastewater extension to this neighborhood, the actual construction costs and everything. That will be brought back to you all when it's done. I don't have an idea how many, how long this will take, but what we're trying to do is to get into the queue of the next round, if everything in this board is agreeable, and we can make the numbers work for the next round of construction grants from the CDPG program, which applications are from January through March 30th of next year. So this is coming a little fast, but we still have plenty of time on this, and at this point, it still looks like a pretty viable project. And we have John Cooley with the town, who's representing the town, since this is town water, I mean, excuse me, town sewer that'd be extended from the industrial plant.
I think I read the.
from January through March thirtieth of next year, so, uh, this is coming a little fast, but, but we still have plenty of time on this, uh, and at this point, uh, it still looks like a pretty viable project. And we have, uh, John Cooley with the town, who's representing the town since this is town water that would, I mean, excuse me, town sewer that'd be extended from the industrial plant. And that's all.
I think I read that Draper Eden is gonna do the analysis, is that, did I read that correctly?
Yes, sir, they're gonna, they're gonna do the preliminary engineering board, they're under our continuing services contract.
All right, any questions? Okay, board comment, any board comment?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay, mine, mine's not much, uh, of course, since we've already discussed the agreement, uh, I was at the town meeting on last Monday, and they've approved it as it was to form, before we changed the form, but, so we'll see how that goes. The only other thing that was really any interest was that they're planning to change the name of two streets, north of, um, um, crap, north of Spicer's Mill, uh, one would be Keenan, uh, Bellevue would become North Street, and the other would be, Radney Road would become Round Hill Drive.
Okay, I guess they have the right to do that.
Post office on that.
A lot, a lot of people, a lot of people. Yeah.
All right, interesting.
Real quick, Mr. Framan and I met yesterday, uh, down at Lake of the Woods, um, regarding the interest in controlling, uh, for lack of a better term, controlling the property rights of property owners outside of Lake of the Woods, uh, it was basically what the meeting was called for, and by the time it was done, uh, it was determined that probably the best thing forward was to look at, uh, possible grants for property owners within Lake of the Woods to control stormwater runoff from their properties. In doing so, I contacted, uh, Patrick Moni at the Regional Commission this morning, uh, he said he'd be very happy to put together a working group, uh, and provide the, uh, organizations that could assist these people within the lake, uh, for the grant process, and I just wanted to make sure that I covered that in case you heard any, any rumors of any sort, and what our meeting covered and where it ended up, so, um...
There was, there was one member of the Board of Directors felt that, uh, because people upstream were contributing pollutants that would flow into the lake, that, uh, that we had some right to deal with that, and, uh, recognizing that as long as they were complying with the law, which, when a bar shits in the woods, that's, uh, it, it happens and that kind of stuff, you're not gonna stop, I mean, it was, it was a matter of educating, uh, some board members primarily, and it took ten of us, uh...
A little bit of that.
Was it, looked ten of us about an hour and a half to do that?
I just wanted to give you an update, so in case you should hear any rumblings from anyone, that is, uh, the meeting that we had, and that's the outcome of it, so, uh, when I spoke to that board member today, they were extremely happy and glad that we could move forward.
Well, it's interesting.
I wouldn't be surprised we hear from her again.
Oh, I wouldn't either, I'm just, that was today's status.
It's interesting you say that, I, I just received the other day a, a report, uh, it's a Chesapeake Bay Foundation report that they put out quarterly, and for the first time I've, I ever saw it, at least, and I, I think it's the first time they've ever done it, they were identifying sources of, of pollution into the bay, and for the first time, they acknowledged that twenty-five percent of the pollutants come from, quote, "natural sources," including those bears you were referring to and other sources, I mean, think about that number, you know, they're, they're squeezing us dealing in, in single-digit percentage sources, and here they're, they're, they finally come around to recognizing that at least a quarter are things that we presumably have nothing to do with.
Are seasonal, like the geese, you know, so...
Oh, yeah, so, it's a big number.
Funny that you should mention bears.
I didn't, he did.
Because, uh, we apparently have a bear out in Barbersville who's smarter than the average bear, and, uh, Kurt can tell you all about him, um, he apparently walked up in broad daylight at the convenience center recently, uh, stood up, reached into the compactor, pulled out a bag of garbage, and went off into the woods with it. Um, I understand that Sheriff's Department has a good description of the bear and lookout for it.
A worn-out one, you're gonna get him for polluting.
Yeah.
What the fee is for the fines for that.
Officially, it's the Department of Game and inland Fisheries.
Yeah, pass the buck.
I used, I used to be one of those, so I was like, that was like...
All right, any other, any other board comment? Oh, I do have one, I, actually, uh, Sunday I was, uh, I attended the hundred-sixtieth, uh, anniversary celebration for Mount Zion Baptist Church, and it was quite, had a, quite a nice, uh, festival there and, and celebration, the Congressman Brat had, uh, had the Congress do a resolution acknowledging that, which was also presented, and they were very thankful to this board for recognizing their hundred-sixtieth year, and, uh, they had a, a guest minister, a guest, uh, pastor, I guess as they call it, that was, uh, quite a, quite a lively, uh, servant, I, I, you know, it's, there's no chance of falling asleep in church when, when that guy's around, he was really good, so, it was, anyway, they, they were appreciative of our recognition of their hundred-sixty years. Did you have something, or, did you have a board comment?
No, I...
The bear.
Just the bear, okay.
I wouldn't bear, I couldn't bear to say anything else.
Uh, any, any questions on the information items? Okay, appointments, boards, and committees?
Yeah, uh, I'd like to, uh, reappoint, uh, Marcia Bros for another term on the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Board.
Okay.
I would also like to appoint Donald Lundry, uh, to replace, uh, Mr. Rochheim on the library board.
Okay, any others?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to go ahead, she'll shoot me, but, uh, Elizabeth Ross, uh, to another term on the Economic Development Authority.
All right, any others? All right, all in favor of those appointments, say aye.
Aye.
I do have a question before you move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Number one, what's going on with FAP and all that, since everybody suddenly resigned? Um, that I find most interesting, and I'd asked, uh, on the Youth Commission before, on what really they do, and, and do we have to have that?
Yes, sir, we, we, uh, we, we're starting the process with, uh, we've let Alicia know, and we, it was too quick of a turnaround for us to get something to you all tonight, and then we got the November at Lake of the Woods, so if it's okay, I mean, we, we can get a, I'll get you some information in the interim, uh, but we were gonna come back in, in December with, with that information.
On the Youth Commission, your turn.
Yeah, with the goal of ultimately, perhaps on the Youth Commission, having it more community interest and not necessarily coming through the, the board appointment, I think that's where you were going, Mr. Goodman.
Well, I, I mean, I just wondered actually how we got there, is it a requirement, or is it something we created, or a past board created?
I, I, you lost me a little bit, what's the relevance of the Lake of the Woods meeting? I, I don't...
Just having Alicia come out to that meeting and, and that type of business, I mean, I was just...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't need to know specifically on that date, I just, following up on, on the question.
Well, Donna Maryman's, uh, just moving out of the area, that's why she's resigned.
I guess, is, is it a, a commission that we need?
Well, that was, that was the question, is, what, what does the board do, and what does the commission do, what does their function?
I think, the question was, is it a requirement, and that's, so, I think that should be a, somebody should be able to answer that very quickly.
How, how about I, I do this, uh, let me get the information from Alicia, I'll just send that out by email.
That's fine.
That, that, that way, we were gonna staff up or gear up for a presentation and discussion with the board, but...
I, I don't need a big bonnet thing, I just wondered, is it a requirement?
Okay.
What, what actually, what's their function?
No.
I, I mean, I know they do the after-prom party and stuff like that, and I think these are the people that are involved in it, but, that, that's, that's more where I was going with it, is it something that we're, we're required to staff, uh, and particularly when you have to start pulling out of districts, trying to find people?
Well, and it's also possible that it could be converted to something more like the Tourism Advisory Committee or one of the others, where it's not necessarily an appointment from, from supervisors, it could be done by the department head or some other, unless it was, unless it's a requirement, that's what...
That's where I was thinking, I, my, my, my judgment tells me it's not a requirement, that it may have come out because of interest, you know, you had a, you had an adult council with youth, and you had youth that were, I mean, they're pretty active, a lot, I know, I know Alicia has a number of them, but having to go through the formal board appointment process, much like, as Mr. White said, the Tourism Advisory Committee, that got kind of on its own weight because of having to get so many people reappointed all the time, it was really those that were interested to come, so, but I'll, I'll get some information in lieu of having Alicia come, I'll get it out to you all.
Okay.
I consulted the bylaws when Susan first let me know of the question, I think it was created some years ago when the Office on Youth was originally established, I haven't talked to Tom about legal requirements, so we can definitely get an answer on that, but it was created to guide the activities of the Office on Youth, and that office has, you know, grown since that commission was created, um, and right now it has ten members that are required to be appointed, we have five district-specific, um, one for each of the five districts, and then five at-large positions, and right now it does have fifty percent vacancy, so there could be some re, you know, restructuring opportunities if it's something that the board wanted to continue. Um, to answer the question on FAP and CPMT, I did talk to Alicia about that, um, those are both parent representative positions, one is required for CPMT, one is required for FAP, they cannot be the same, um, parent representative, it is strictly a volunteer position, and it does require a number of hours, um, meetings during the day, um, and there, there is no compensation, no, um, you know, travel reimbursement or anything, and that has been one of the biggest issues with recruiting and retaining volunteers in that position. It, it does require time during the day, during work hours for a lot of parents, um, and i- if you look at the makeup of the rest of those committees, FAP and CPMT, they are staff-appointed to those positions that are required to do, um, or provide the service on those committees as part of their job, so, that's kind of been the contributing factor to the FAP and CPMT vacancies, but they are important positions, we're just having a hard time getting someone to commit and stay.
Are they required positions?
Yes.
I think they are mandated.
And, and the other positions are mandated as well, they're just, you know, someone from the court, someone from social services, someone from Office on Youth, and they're compensated as part of their job, they're required to be there and do it, and they're having difficulty recruiting a volunteer to, to stay and commit to the positions.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, how, how can you, how can there be a requirement that someone volunteer? That, that just seems like a odd situation.
I, I'm gonna go out, we'll check on this, but I think the way that these, there's a, the way the FAP and the CPMT and the CSA, all that works, is that you have the, the folks that are on each one of these levels, FAP makes recommendations on cases, and the CPMT, that the CSA, the Children's Services Act says, here's who constitutes the FAP, and you've got somebody from the Community Services Board, somebody from Social Services, and, and on and on, and then a parent representative, and they don't say, you know, I don't know if there's any sanctions if we don't have a parent representative, we do the best that we can to fill it.
Well, apparently not, 'cause there are vacancies in both cases.
And we've had vacancies.
We hope, and we hope not, anyway.
Well, that's another one, we need to have a little bit of...
We'll look into that.
Information, okay. All right, any other, do you have any question?
No, no.
Okay, yeah, good, yeah, those are, we need to be sure that we follow up on those, so, okay, calendar, we're to schedule a meeting with Dogwood on the eighteenth at six.
Yes, sir.
Is that, what, do we know at this point whether we have...
We, we, as we typically do, offered both December meeting dates to, um, the Health Center Commission to see which one worked, um, in coordination with their, their staff, and December eighteenth worked better for their schedule, we try to schedule this a little bit in advance so that we can guide the items that are on the agenda that night, um, we do have public hearings planned for the first meeting in December, um, and, you know, this meeting does prevent some of, you know, regular business from taking place, um, so, we have suggested at their request, a December eighteenth meeting.
Okay, all right, any, any issues with that, anybody? Okay, closed meeting.
Let me take a deep breath.
Go on, go on to that lawyer voice that you get on commercials.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following, discussion or consideration of the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, resignation of specific public officers, appointments, or employees of the public body, specifically Assistant Fire Chief and former nine-one-one Director, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body within the GWAP area, discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities, and briefings by staff members, legal counsel, and law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters, where discussion in open meeting would jeopardize the safety, any person, or security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software system, and specifically county cybersecurity, discussion, consideration of investment of public funds, where competition or bargain is involved, or if made public initially, the financial interests of the government unit would be adversely affected, concerning the GWAP area and the Sheriff's Department, and constitution of legal counsel employed or employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning working papers, exemptions to FOIA, and whereas pursuant to sections two-point-two, thirty-seven, eleven, a one, a three, a six, a eight, a nineteen, of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We, we be back for breakfast tomorrow morning? Okay.
Motion to recess.
Now we know one wants to do it, see?
I made the motion to recess.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, okay, so we're back to our regular agenda, and it is almost seven o'clock, let me look, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers signed up.
Okay.
First is Ash Laughlin, seven-one-seven-four Rapidan Road, you can have the podium.
Uh, good evening, I wanted to read a, uh, an email that I sent to, uh, Teal and to Alan Saunders VDOT, uh, and just to get this on everybody's radar, uh, I've been a resident or own my house in, uh, Rapidan since two thousand thirteen, and since that time, I've seen an incredible uptick in traffic of all kinds, tractor-trailer, uh, truck traffic from the quarry, and vehicular traffic coming through, and this letter's in response to, uh, work that I've done with some of my neighbors during the last two years, extensive work trying to actually get something done to quell this, and nothing has occurred in that period of time, so if you don't mind, I'd like to read this and try to get it in within my three minutes. Um, gentlemen, I'm writing to let you know of two serious accidents that have occurred within the past month involving industrial traffic in the town of Rapidan, uh, I'm attaching photos of both wrecks in this email, and I have a couple of pictures of those if you wanna see those, Bill, uh, as well as a list of the substantive measures that we've discussed in past meetings, uh, that we, that's the folks of Rapidan, would like to see implemented as soon as possible, I'm attaching a petition that we have generated seeking to end industrial traffic on our roads in Rapidan, that is six fifteen. I'm attaching a petition that we have generated seeking to end industrial traffic on our roads in Rapidan, that is six fifteen. This petition, petition has forty-five signatures of affected citizens in both counties, and I have that petition if anybody wants to see that or can see that. The first of these accidents occurred October tenth of this year and involved an eighteen-wheel truck hauling a full-size trailer. The truck was traveling at a high rate of speed and collided with the train overpass. The truck was four inches lower than the, or higher than the trestle right next to the fire station in Rapidan on six fourteen. Granted, I understand this is in Culpeper County, but this is to illustrate the, the massive problem that we're having in Rapidan, and this is just to illustrate two of the accidents that happened last month. Serious damage occurred to both the tractor-trailer, seeing the photograph, as well as the tracks above. The truck struck the bridge overpass with enough force to move the tracks a number, a number of inches, and railroad spikes were dislodged from this truck hitting it. Full-size tractor-trailer. The second wreck occurred approximately one week ago and involves a fully-loaded asphalt truck that destroyed a portion of the guardrail on the turn headed towards Rapidan River Bridge on six fifteen. That is in the Culpeper side again, but it's coming around that corner, if you guys are familiar, coming towards Orange, and it just went straight into that railing, and then down the abutment. Went down the guardrail towards Rapidan Road, the truck caused considerable damage to the guardrail and it had to be towed out of that steep embankment, causing a lot of disruption. Both of these collisions illustrate the immediate need for both counties, and I stress this both counties, to work together to help solve our traffic safety concerns in Rapidan. Excuse my langa, my language, but we are damn lucky that there have been no fatalities related to the tremendous uptick in industrial traffic as well as passenger traffic on our roads. The bury our heads in the sand approach is not working for the property owners that this body serves, and no concrete steps have been implemented to date that are actually helping with this deadly serious problem, none. We are faced with industrial traffic on a scale that our rural roads were never intended to serve, never. Those roads were built for just small vehicular or maybe the, the farmer traffic that we have with tractors, et cetera, but not these loaded-up trucks that are coming through here. Additionally, we have seen a huge increase in vehicular traffic that has occurred within the past two years, which coupled with industrial traffic has turned our quiet village into a high-speed freeway. All of these concerns have been brought to your attention multiple times by myself and many other concerned citizens. We have worked diligently to get authorities to pay attention to this ever-increasing problem, all the while the onus has been placed on the citizenry, the citizenry, to fix this problem. And this is not the way government is supposed to work. You may be tired of hearing from me on this, but I cannot begin, you cannot begin to imagine how tired I am of having absolutely nothing done to protect the safety and serenity of our village. It is well past time that we hear from you listing substantive solutions as well as a timetable for implementing these solutions. I say, what are we gonna do to fix this problem, what are you gonna do to fix this problem? I can show you, can I show pictures, is that, it missed him? This first picture is of a neighbor of mine took this picture of a double yellow line and one of the gravel trucks passing her and a tractor at the same time over a double yellow line. This behavior is, is just absolutely commonplace from the quarry drivers that come through there. Always those trucks are over the double yellow line, always they are speeding. And I say that because every time I'm behind one of them or they're behind me, they are absolutely speeding, they are absolutely not going in, in a safe manner. The second picture I'm sending or passing around is of the tractor-trailer that struck the train tracks in Rapidan next to the post office. If I have, do I have time left?
You're, you're, you're beyond your grace period, but give you another minute or so here. I do have, you, you've mentioned two roads, six fourteen and six fifteen, are those the two that are a primary concern, or are there other?
That's right.
Those are the two, okay.
Yeah. What, what has occurred is Rapidan Road has become a feeder road for commuter traffic now, and it's an industrial corridor. The quarry is a massive user of this road, an abuser of this road. And then we also have Walmart trucks coming through now, we have Target trucks coming through, eighteen-wheelers coming through on this very rural scenic byway, by the way, which again was never intended for this kind of traffic. We are, are really, just at, at ends, we, we can't tell you enough of how upset we are about what has happened to our, our village. And a lot of it has to do with the quarry, but a lot of it just has to do with overuse of the road. There are a number of things we'd like to see, one of them is speed feedback signs in the village installed permanently, and that is the, the signs that tell you what your speed is, we know, and Alan Saunders from VDOT has told me specifically, that these signs work. I've been promised a million different things and nothing has come to fruition. One of those is, we'll give you a temporary sign, we don't want a temporary sign. We want permanent signs in town that say, stop, slow down, you're going fifty miles an hour in a twenty-five mile an hour zone. We want to have this road removed from ways that app on, on your smartphones and Google Maps, which is a doable thing. It's a, sorry, I didn't mean to say anything funny.
If you say so, sir, if you say so.
What, I, I don't...
I, I, I believe that you can have them removed.
Yeah, I've been promised this by Alan Saunders, and again, listen, I've been doing this for two years, and I've been getting a runaround since day one, I feel like I've been led around like a horse. Instead of somebody saying, hey, this is the way we need to do this, if you, if you really have a problem here, get your folks together and let's figure out how to fix this, nobody has said that. Everybody has given me another person to talk to, another where, another place to go, another waste of my time, and it's been considerable waste of time. And one of these things that is doable, we found, is ways can remove us from, and I don't mean to get angry, but I'm upset about this. It's my property now, this is my son, my fourteen-year-old son walking down the street, and I'm worried he's gonna get run over. My friends and neighbors' animals and their children, serious matter. I would like to see the whole speed limit lowered on Rapidan Road. Take it down from, there's two-mile stretch between Orange and Rapidan that's fifty-five, fifty-five miles an hour. It's absurd to have a two-mile stretch that's that speed, especially when trucks do not go the speed limit. They never go the forty-five restriction that's on all the signs, they always go over that speed. And I'd like to see this, the low visibility signage replaced. I'd also like to see the sheriff have a zero tolerance policy for tickets in the town of Rapidan. We have a, a two-hundred-dollar additional fine on our signs in the town, and that is never enforced. Whenever those tickets come up before the judge, they throw them out. So why have it on there? And the whole point of having it is so that we will get people to obey the speed limit, which is twenty-five miles an hour in the town. And that's something we could do immediately, and that's, doesn't cost anything, it actually makes you money. And then in the end, we really need to see mechanical means in town to slow traffic down. And the proven way to do that is speed tables, and we've talked with Alan Saunders, and that's one of his recommendations, which is a ramp, you may be familiar, it's a ramp up, over, and down, which will, and slow these trucks down, slow this traffic down so that they're not racing through town any longer. And I think these are all reasonable concerns. We're talking about Rapidan, our section in Orange is on the National Register of Historic Places, it is historic village. It is not, it's a scenic byway, one of only two in Orange, the whole county of Orange. This should be a cherished spot, not something used just so people can use it to speed through here to go to work or to, for one quarry effectively to abuse and infantile. And on that subject, that quarry has another...
I'm gonna have to ask you to, to wrap it up, your, your...
Okay, that, I appreciate that. The quarry does have an alternate route that, that they specified to folks in Orange a number of years ago that they would utilize, six, six forty-nine, and they've decided not to utilize that. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, next speaker is Cindy Pipes-Jones, or, I'm sorry, Johnson. Resident of the Village of Rapidan as well.
Good evening, I'm gonna try and just pull up an article real quick on my, keep this open. Thank you for having me, let me speak. My name is Cindy Pipes-Johnson, and I live and own a home in the Village of Rapidan. My mother was born on Piedmont Farm in Rapidan, my grandparents are from Rapidan, I grew up there, I love Rapidan. I'm here tonight as part of the Citizens for a Safer Six Fifteen. I am concerned for the safety of everyone who lives and drives on six fifteen. From the town of Orange, leaving Orange, the five or six miles to Rapidan, through Rapidan into Culpeper County, six fifteen continues and gets very narrow, and then it, it runs into five twenty-two as, as you're going to Culpeper. I'm greatly concerned about my neighbor's safety, the safety of family, friends, and children who live in Rapidan. Rapidan has an active social network. We are walking to our neighbors' houses, we are having picnics, we are going down to the river, we walk to the post office, we walk to church. There are at least two school bus stops in Rapidan, both at the bottom, one is at, towards the top of the first hill, that's very steep, and the other's at the bottom. We do all this walking on the side of the road, we're walking our dogs, we're walking with our family, and there are no sidewalks in Rapidan, you're on the side of the road. I'm concerned that six fifteen, while once was a very quiet and rural road, things have changed. It's still, as the, the speaker before me said, it's a Virginia byway, and now it is a very busy road. It's used daily by cars, by track, farm equipment, tractors, and heavy gravel trucks. And now we have documentation that trucks are coming from the Culpeper side, Target and Walmart, twenty-four hours a day, we have documentation that they are coming through. I'm out cutting my grass one day, and up through twenty-five mile per hour up a hill, here comes an eighteen-wheeled Target truck. They have no business on that road. Several people over the past few years have spoken and sent emails to the Board of Supervisors, to VDOT, to Orange County Transportation, the Police Department, and other agencies regarding these concerns. One outcome of this was that we did have the speed limit reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five in Rapidan. There has been some signs put up temporarily that let you know when, when you're going too fast, and those are not there right now to my knowledge. Most recently, there was a large gravel truck that wrecked on this very sharp curve as you go from Culpeper over the bridge towards Orange. It had to be pulled out, it went down over the bank a little bit there, you've seen pictures. And in the middle of the night, about two or three o'clock in the morning, an eighteen-wheeler coming from, must have been coming from Route fifteen through six fourteen, which T-bones in the little downtown part of Rapidan into six fifteen, went underneath an overpass and tore up the CXX railroad track there. It caused a lot of, of problems, you know, rescue had to come out in the middle of the night, police that could be doing something else, had to take care of somebody who did not belong in that road. If you would like to see a picture of a fully-loaded gravel truck passing a car and a tractor over a yellow double line, then I encourage you to go to our Facebook page, which is Citizens for a Safer Six Fifteen. Those big trucks have a right to do their business, I understand that, my father was a businessman, I've been working since I was twelve. Don't want to put anybody out of work, but I don't want anybody to get hurt in our quiet, historic little ta, village of Rapidan. I'm asking that the Board of Supervisors take immediate action and send a request to the Commonwealth Transportation Board to do a study, which would include alternate routes, traffic counts, truck traffic counts, crash sites, and also to check on the, there's a standard for the curve in the road that the, this Commonwealth Transportation Board can check. If you need to know those guidelines, here's a copy of it, may I give that to you to pass around on how that process works? But we would need the Board of Supervisors to all agree that this study would be maybe the first step to get some data, some actual data, so we can get something done in Rapidan. Time is of the essence, no more talk, it's time for action. All these concerns have been brought up to the Board of Supervisors before, the safety of our village, and all those who live on Route, all of those who live everywhere on Route sixteen, Route six fifteen, is in jeopardy. I am encouraged to know that the County of Albemarle's Board of Supervisors did have a study done by the, the Board, and they are making changes now, they have listened to their constituents and to the citizens of Albemarle County, and I ask you all please to take this very seriously, and please take action quickly, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Closed public comment period. And I guess we're going to, thank you. We, we need to return to our closed meeting, motion to resume, closing the motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Members of the Board, to the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White?
Aye.
Move it, Jerry.
Oh, you're good.
Aye.
It's like, sit in a traffic light waiting.